...people in the room because that would take the whole time, but we have some important visitors here, namely Sally Jewell, Secretary of the Interior, and Robert Bonney with the USDA. I'm grateful to have you guys here. It's not every day in San Juan County we get such important visitors and we're glad to have you and especially want to welcome the citizens who came out to this and appreciate your cooperation and, you know, courtesy, I guess during this meeting. We want to have a productive meeting. The purpose of the visit from Secretary Jewell was to hear from the commissioners and so we're going to try to do that. It's not really going to be open up to the public, obviously, but we're looking forward to having a little bit of dialogue with Secretary and with the USDA. With that, I'm going to maybe just give you some time, introduce yourself and...
Okay. Hi, everybody. My name is Sally Jewell. Hi back there. Sorry, if I sit at the table, I can't see you. It is really a pleasure to be here in San Juan County. Of course, if I... There we go. How about if I do this? That'll work a little bit better so I can see people. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the welcome and for two commissioners here. I know there's a lot of emotions running hot about the beauty of San Juan County and how to take care of it and that's why I'm here. I'm here to listen, to listen to the community, to see for myself what's here, but predominantly to listen. So, this is my second day back in Utah. It's not a stranger to this part of Utah, although I have not been to Monticello before. I just want to say I've got a few colleagues that are traveling with me, got a handful of colleagues from the BLM led by Director Neil Cornsey. And Neil, if you could just raise your hand. So Neil leads the BLM. Jenna Whitlock and Beth here from BLM Leadership and a number of others are here representing that organization. I also say that I'm traveling with representatives from members of the Utah Congressional Delegation. So, I've got Casey with Congressman Chaffetz's office, Fred... Oh, no. Is Fred not here anymore?
He is.
Yes, he is. Oh, there he is, hiding out. Fred with... Excuse me. I said Congressman Bishop's office, Congressman Chaffetz's office. Two work so closely together, I get them mixed up. And Cody with Governor Herbert's office and Senator Hatch's office.
Ron Dean.
Ron. Where's Ron? Ron hiding out back there. So, we've been spending the last day and a half together and we're going to spend the next couple of days together, really through the open public meeting that we have on Saturday, learning and listening and meeting people on the ground and hearing what everybody has to say and that's what this trip is about. So, I got an opportunity to start my trip in the airport with the governor, learning about more of what's important to the governor and from his perspective, people of the state of Utah. We certainly talked about the Public Lands Initiative. We talked about the areas that people believe warrant greater protections around the state, particularly in parts of San Juan County. So, we talked openly about that and it's great that Cody's with us on the trip to make sure that I continue to understand the governor's perspective. We then went to Emery County and met with Emery County Commissioners, similar to what we're doing today. The crowd is just a wee bit smaller there and we heard about the land planning efforts that had gone on for a long time in Emery County, back to really a decade and a half, and how that tied together with the PLI, what the county commissioners are hoping for the future of their county and what they're hoping for the lands that they'd like to develop and the lands that they'd like to see protected. We then went and did a nice tour of the San Rafael Swell, which is pretty spectacular. We then ended up in Grand County and had a meeting with the Grand County Commissioners last night and also learned about their vision and the work that they'd been doing, both in land planning and the Moab Master Leasing Plan with the BLM and also how that ties together with the PLI, the Public Lands Initiative. And then we have just visited the Indian Creek area. Was with Sitla on the big flat lands, talking about Sitla lands and the interest that they have in transferring lands. And so, we've just now come from Indian Creek, have been to Heidi Red's place, which is pretty amazing. I guess it's the Nature Conservancy's place now, but she's still ranching there and learning about the rock climbing in that area and ended up at Newspaper Rock before we came up over the mountains and got a beautiful view.
It's Heidi Red's place.
Yeah. It's Heidi Red's place. Well, yes. She did sell it a while ago, but yes, she's still very much there and very much committed to taking care of those landscapes and the cattle she runs out there along with her son Matt. So, that's been a little bit of the itinerary so far. We're going to get out and see a lot more of San Juan County between now and Saturday evening before I bid my farewell to Utah. So, that's a little bit about the trip and you live in very pretty country and special country and I know you care a great deal about it and so do we. So, that's a quick summary from myself and I'm going to turn it over to my colleague in Washington DC, the Undersecretary for Natural Resources and the Environment, Robert Bonney from the US Department of Agriculture overseeing the Forest Service and all other things. Robert?
Great. So, thank you. I'm going to be very brief. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I want to thank you all for having us here today. It's an important topic and we appreciate you all spending time with us. So, my name's Robert Bonney. I'm Undersecretary for Natural Resources and Environment, oversee the US Forest Service as well as the Natural Resources Conservation Service. Several other folks here with me, Deputy Leslie Jones, Deputy Undersecretary, as well as Dan Hiron, who's the Associate Chief of the US Forest Service, Nora Rasher, the Regional Forester here, Glenn Casamassa, used to be in the forest here, now back with us in DC as Associate Deputy Chief over the National Forest System. Also have your Forest Supervisor here, Mark Pentecost. So, more than anything, I just want to reiterate, look forward to the conversation. Our job here is to listen to all of you all and I look forward to that. Thank you.
Rebecca Benali, San Juan County Commissioner. Good afternoon, everyone. It's good to have you here. This is how I identify myself as a Navajo woman, Denek woman, and I'd like to just extend great greetings, a welcome, glad that you can be here with us, here in beautiful San Juan County and I'm glad that you're in a listening mode and so, because there are people that are very passionate and so it is good to listen to them.
Good afternoon. My name is Bruce Adams. I attend many of the chapter meetings in the South with the Navajo people. Most of those chapter meetings are conducted in their native language, so in the spirit of that, I'm going to talk to you in my native language today. Anyway, I'm a fourth-generation rancher. My family helped settle this country and in the cattle business. Former schoolteacher, retired schoolteacher, been a commissioner for a little over 11 and a half years and just want to welcome all of you folks from outside of San Juan County here today and we tried to order a really nice day so that you...
Aren't they all this way?
Sometimes we get a little bit of storm. But anyway, welcome.
And my name's Bill Lyman. I'm the Chairman of the Commission and if Bruce was talking in his native rancher language, we'd have to be toned down, I think. We might could use some of that. I just want to launch into this. If it's okay, I'll go first and just want to kind of say some things, our feelings about San Juan County. First of all, again, thanks for coming and it means a lot to us that you'd be here. In San Juan County, we've got some really unique features. Natural Bridges National Monument is 12 square miles. Hoboken National Monument's a mile and a quarter. Canyonlands National Park is 527 square miles. Glen Canyon Recreation Area, 1,960 square miles. And the proposal we're talking about, or that's been proposed for Bear's Ear is 3,000 square miles. And that's in addition to these others that I've mentioned. On top of that, we've got 400,000 acres of wilderness area, wilderness study area. So, in a county, one of the largest counties in the United States, and 8 percent private land, you know, if we don't have access to public lands, it can be, you know, really devastating to the people who live here for their livelihoods and for a number of other reasons. These places that I'm talking about, they really are the soul of this county. When we get up here on this side of the county, you've seen a little bit of that and you'll see more of it and it is spectacular. But I guess as I contemplate the beauty of San Juan County, to me, the real beauty is the people who live here, of whatever nationality they come from. And it pains me when I see other groups coming from outside the county who want to disparage San Juan County and it seems like, especially if it seems to have a political undertone or motivation. They talk... There's claims about rampant looting, cultural insensitivity, discrimination, voting rights violations. Groups have come in and they post signs and then accuse the county or its residents of hatred and cry for retribution. They accuse innocent people of crimes and then run petitions to have them prosecuted and punished. It's the oddest spectacle imaginable, but they seem to gain traction, which is disturbing. A national monument should be a source of pride, a distinction that brings recognition and opportunities to a community and from what we've seen so far, and I know I'm not talking about the Secretary's office, but here on the ground, what we've seen so far seems to be being done wrong with justification and rationalization rather than coming in and saying, "What's really special about San Juan County?" I know as a county, we feel that there are some really special things here. We recognize that. We recognize the people. But for example, some of the kind of the, what I feel like are some underhanded things, we've got a group that has claimed to have been excluded from participation in the Public Lands Initiative and they most certainly were not excluded. They did participate and they were invited to every meeting. Interestingly enough, if you look at the Conservation Lands Foundation, which I'm sure you're aware of, and they fund a lot of Friends groups, but in one of their board meetings, they said, "Anyone that receives grants, quote, 'must further Conservation Lands Foundation's conservation goals, which includes a 1.9 million acre Bear's Ear's National Monument.'" It seems fairly specific and some of these same groups who are engaged with the county on our Public Lands Advisory Council, which we had meetings for a year and a half, very earnest, very good meetings, find out that partway through is when they had received some of this funding. Some dropped out, some stayed in it without disclosing that they had basically made a commitment to the National Monument versus the Public Lands Initiative and that was troubling. I won't go into a list of all the local groups here that received funding from that, but I'm sure you're aware of that dynamic of how sometimes the money affects the position that these groups take. And that's fine. We all live in a country where people can support whatever position they choose, but what I don't like is when they try to spin this and say that it's something different or point a finger at the county that I love and the people that I love as being less than sensitive or less than interested in this area. So, the support for a national monument is based on a false narrative. We don't support it. Any other people in San Juan County don't support it.
Secretary Jewell, I want you to understand, as I speak, all these people here in the crowd, they're my constituents of San Juan County and that's the most important commodity that we can have besides land. And so, I would like to say that what spirituality and what sacredness, it's people and it's land, it's how we take care of it. As the first Native American woman to sit on this San Juan County Commission, it has been disheartening, also passionately representing my constituents here, Native American people, the Ute people, the Ute Nation, the Paiute Nation, the Navajo Nation people here, and then also everyone in this county constituency of San Juan County, the largest county in the state and also the poorest county in the state. So, with that, I'd like to talk about being a steward of land and what it means to us. In particular, I'm going to talk about Bear's Ear's View. That is a sacred place. It's a place for reverence. It's a place of beauty. It's a place where we meditate. It's a place where we get medicinal plant, where we haul wood, where we haul berries and where we connect with Mother Earth, Father Sky, and everything that is dear and loving to us. And so, I speak in behalf of my constituency and also the Navajo people. And so, what I'd like to say is, as a Native American person, as a Navajo woman, my history is different from most people in this audience here. My history as a Native American person started 500 years ago when Columbus landed on North American continent and thought he was somewhere else, but he was on my native land. And so, with that, and then 200 years ago, formal government. And in just 1960s, the Navajo people finally began a chance to vote. While everybody else had that right, it was until 1960s that the Navajo people finally had the opportunity to vote. With that, I'd like to say, not any personal pointing, but as a whole big government called federal government, United States of America government, three-branch government, has not been nice to my people. The treaties of 1868 to this day, 2016, we have not been fully adhered to. There have been broken treaties and broken promises to my people. It's a trust issue. How can you trust time and time again? We need to build that bridge. We need to close that gap of trusting one another, working in the spirit of humanity and being together. That's what we're talking about here. It's a nonpartisan issue. It's not about what you like or I like. It's not about a win or lose. It's about working together in a united way. And so, this issue, public lands and then evolving into a national conservation area, wilderness and perhaps a national monument. What does a national monument mean to a Native American person? You can interpret it in many ways. It has divided families, Secretary Jewell, brothers and sisters, aunts, uncles, grandparents, elders. That's what it has done. It's created two paths. We as human people should plan, collaborate, unite. One journey, one thought, one voice is to work together, but this designation, perhaps, maybe, a national monument, all it has done is divided my people. There has been restraining orders that have been done. People that used to visit each other no longer visit or talk to each other anymore because of this. So, I'm sitting here before you as a Navajo woman, a community leader, and respectful in behalf of my constituency, we need to find a common ground, a commonality to work together. And I don't think that that is called a national monument. I strongly oppose a national monument in behalf of my constituency and for babies to be born because it's their future. That's what we're talking about. And talk about a sacred site, a pristine site, a place for reverence, a place for spirituality. If we make it into a national monument, that's going to be gone because it guarantees tourism. The pristiness will be gone. There will be people, thousands and thousands of people, because we've drawn attention to what was sacred to us, because sacredness and national monument do not go together, folks, because right down the road in Moab, they have so many people coming to these areas, busloads and busloads and cars and cars, full of people. And so, how can we keep this Bear's Ear's View a sacred site when all we're doing is inviting thousands of foreigners that do not understand what this place means to me, to my constituency, to go there, to stand there, to pray and be spiritual? I believe that that's infringing on that right because it's going to guarantee that that's going to happen. We're talking about protection and preservation to the best of our abilities as human beings because that's our stewardship, that's our connection to this land, that makes us who we are and what we are and a history. Everyone has a history. I believe Public Lands Initiative is a people process. There's been 22 meetings, six public hearings. We continue to reach out to the seven chapters called Utah Navajo Strip, about 7,800 strong of Navajos along the strip. While some of these resolutions may say recently a national monument, it originally started by supporting a public land initiative and then a national conservation area. And some of these outside groups, folks, this should be a local issue, this should be a local process, local people making the decision of their own destiny, of what and how we can be better steward of the land that we live on because it's not ours, folks, Native Americans. We don't own land. We take care of land in the best way to the best of our abilities. And so, my belief is that it's about local management, it's about collective effort, it's about working in collaboration at the grassroots level, not a top-down designation, not a top-down way of working together, but grassroots, coming together in the true nature of unity. And with that, I just would like to say, as being a leader in this community, it is very disheartening to me that we have come to this point of a lot of animosity, but I believe that through working together, we can become one voice and that we can have one mind intellectually, socially, psychologically and the main, main reason is in the spirit of goodness that we work together. And so, I have been at this table for a year and a half. I have no other agenda, folks. My agenda is what my constituency wants. Like I said, this is not, it's not a nonpartisan issue. It's about letting the local people control and plan their destiny of what we should do in this county. In this case, the Navajo people, the Ute people and the Paiute people that have been left not sitting at the table, they need to be brought to the table. So, with that, I would just like to say, let's believe in Public Land Initiative. Let's talk about national conservation area. Let's talk about coming together to work together and listening to the grassroots people that it will affect, not outside deep-pocketed groups that can out-resource local people because that's what it is. So, with that, again, thank you very much for coming to San Juan County and my constituency out there of San Juan County and the folks from Washington DC and all, everyone else in this room. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you very much.
Sally and Robert, I'm going to talk about a couple of things that I hope will help you understand why we as a commission are opposed to a national monument. I have three maps here. Those are for those two down there. One of the maps is the proposed Bear's Ear's National Monument, 1.9 million acres. The other one is the San Juan County Land Council National Conservation Area Proposal and the last one is the Public Land Initiative Proposal. Now, if you kind of look at those and compare, it gives you an idea of how immense the National Monument Proposal is. If you look down the right side of the map, you can see the Highway 491, kind of in black and white checkers. It runs all the way from Moab down through Bluff to Mexican Hat and Monument Valley. Most of the land that is being considered for protection is to the west of that highway, whether it's the Public Land Initiative, the San Juan County Land Council Proposal or the Bear's Ear's Proposal, but I think there is a big distinction between the three and that's what I think my constituency is concerned about. You look out this window, you can see part of the beautiful Blue Mountains. On beyond that is Elk Ridge and other areas. What concerns me is that in the National Monument Proposal, that mountain is included. All of that mountain is included in the National Monument Proposal. That mountain is the life source for the people in Monticello, Blanding and surrounding communities because it's our watershed. I can't imagine how it would be managed under a monument proposal and in my opinion, it would threaten the very life source of our, of the constituency of Monticello and Blanding and the surrounding area because it is the watershed area. And so, the other two proposals, the Land Council Proposal and the PLI, neither one include that mountain area or that forested area. And I also have some copies for those on the front row. Maybe Jenna, you could just start those around so that those other people can see that.
What was the name of that?
Excuse me? Well, we call this the Blue Mountain. It's part of the Manti La Sal forested area. On the backside is called Elk Ridge and, you know, I'm not sure, Mike, if those are the actual names that everybody knows them by, but again, the forest people can probably help you understand that a little bit. The other concern that I have is, again, this top-down approach. I think government works better. Even President Obama had indicated that he, to the governor and to our congressional people, that he would not designate a monument in Utah, in San Juan County, without getting the input from the public. And I believe that's probably why you're here, is to get some input from the public. I wouldn't say that 100 percent of the people feel the same way that the San Juan County Commission does, but certainly the local people that live here, that elect us, expect us to listen to them. We have tried very hard to listen to them. We've been through a nearly two-year process of public meetings, of involvement with all of the user groups of the public land. We have asked them, invited them to come and meet with the San Juan County Commission, with our land team, to indicate to us what they would like to see. San Juan County Commission understands fully that there are areas of this county that need protection. We also believe that there are numerous and maybe enough laws on the books that provide that protection. Now, because there's a law on the books that says something is right or wrong, does that mean there will never be people that will not abide by the law? Obviously, that question is no. There are going to be people that do not abide by the law, but I'm telling you that the majority of the people in San Juan County are law-abiding citizens. They do believe in obeying the law. We know that there are areas that need protection, but whether those areas are as vast as 1.9 million acres, we do not believe that 1.9 million acres creation of a monument will increase the protection. In fact, the creation of a monument may not increase protection of those cultural resources at all. You've got to have boots on the ground, you've got to have money... You've got to have boots on the ground, you've got to have money allocated to those boots on the ground if you're going to increase the protection in any way. Just the designation of a monument doesn't mean that that protection is going to happen automatically. We've heard many times from the BLM here locally that they lack funds and they lack individuals to do their job, frankly. And, you know, we feel for them. I don't know that we want a huge force of enforcement people out on the ground throughout this county. We expect people to act with integrity when they go out onto the public land and that they treat the public land the way it should be treated. But we also expect the public land to be open to people to enjoy and to be able to use in the right way by obeying the laws. And so, I just want you to know that we oppose, that I oppose, my constituency opposes the designation of a national monument because it really will not accomplish what is being sought. We think that a national conservation area and local people coming together and addressing those problems has a better chance of success than just a national monument designation. Please don't allow the president to designate a national monument in San Juan County. Please.
I will turn the mic over to you for, you know, just for a little bit of response. Before I do that, I noticed a few other people that are here. Representative Noel, Mike Noel, state representative, and appreciate you, Mike, and Kevin Strad, I see you back there, and David Hinckins, our senator. Glad to have you here. And I think there's probably some commissioners here as well that, if you're here, raise your hands. There's Noel, thanks for coming. Anyway, someone heard me.
Mike is our representative, too.
Yeah, Mike is our representative. Did I not say that?
Yeah.
We do have a copy of a resolution we'd like to give to the secretary. Kevin has that. We had a resolution, a special session at the state legislature, and that passed overwhelmingly bipartisan support. I'm not sure if you've had a copy of that, Madam Secretary, but Kevin has that. And I think the statements that have been made here by my commissioners, especially by Commissioner Benelli, who I've worked very closely on this, and the Native Americans within my district, I think it tells you that many of the, much of the information that's been disseminated is not correct. And we are digging into that deeper. We've found some individuals that are willing to go on record, that were actually as part of some of this. And we feel like there's some things that have been done that are improper, mainly possibly outside the law. I worked for the Bureau of Land Management for 22 years. After the Grand Staircase was designated by President Clinton in 1996, I resigned from that agency. I ran for public office, and it's been my dedicated effort to try to keep these public lands open, accessible to all people, to protect the artifact. But I know, and you know, both of us know, that all of the laws that are out there today were not there in 1926, in 1906, when the Antiquities Act was written. And there are plenty of laws in ARPA and NEPA and the Federal Land Policy Management Act to protect these lands adequately and provide what the Congress of the United States said in passing Flip 'n' 76, multiple use, sustained yield, and ability for the local people to maintain their livelihood to be able to use these lands. So I would encourage you strongly, let's not have another Grand Staircase. Those feelings are still very, very clear in the state of Utah, the way that was done, the reasons it was done. So I would ask you, please do not, encourage the president not to create another national monument in San Juan County.
Thank you, Representative. Rebecca wanted to take a little bit more time and present me something. Before I forget, I do want to say thanks to our law enforcement officers that are here and appreciate everything they do. In fact, let's give our officers a round of applause.
At this time, I'd like to present you with some letters from the constituency and residents of San Juan County. We have a special one that's from an eight-year-old, and so I'd like for you to read that. There's letters and petition signatures that are here. I'm sure this will continue to, more will continue to flow into your office. But before I present this to you, another thought that I think it's worth mentioning is that in life and in general, sometimes more rules and more mandates doesn't mean that it's going to help and change people's mind. Because you can never build fence high enough to keep people from going to prisons. So basically, to us, a national monument is restrictive, and there's already laws and regulations and mandates in place with the Forest Service and with BLM. It just needs to be enforced, such as Section 106, the tribal consultation, and then also the Native American Religious Freedom Act. And many acts, there's about 10 or 11. So I just feel that we just need to do enforcement and work together. So with that, I'd like to turn this over to you. There's signatures and a letter from an eight-year-old that I think you'll find very entertaining.
It's from Kizi, by the way. Kate, you want to, is that one or that one?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Well, thank you all very much for sharing your thoughts with me and, most importantly, for your service to the public. I will take a moment here just to thank everyone that's in elected office, everyone that works for federal land management agencies, the federal government, the state government, the local government, and the county and cities. It's difficult to be a public servant. This is democracy. What we're doing here, how we're sharing ideas with each other, the information that we're taking from all parties, the meeting that we will have on Saturday, and I hope for those of you that are here, you will help us make sure that's a respectful meeting when all voices that want to be here and all points of view are heard, because it wouldn't do any of us a service not to allow people to speak. But I want to thank all of you for your service, and particularly for law enforcement, whether it's members of my security detail, or BLM, or Park Service, or the county sheriff, or the state police. Thank you for your service to all of us and putting yourself in harm's way every day for our protection. And I hope that my visit down here doesn't give you too much more work than what it already has. It is difficult to make the kinds of decisions that you all have to make and that I have to make. And I think the one thing that we would, I hope, share in common is that we think about the long game. We think about what's right for not our generation, our children, or just our grandchildren, but the generations to follow. And I know that I sleep well when I make decisions on that basis, and that's exactly what I think about as I listen to all of your comments and as I think about the work that I do every day and its importance. I appreciate the maps. Maps are always helpful because people can talk in the abstract, but that makes it more difficult. There are places here that are incredibly special. And I teased the governor, I said, well, Utah is a very special place in many ways. And it's, well, sometimes that's fun politics as well as incredibly wonderful places to visit and places to live. And you see that in the growth of some parts of the state. And I hope that you experience that. It's got to be tough to lead a county where poverty levels are high. To Commissioner Benelli, I think it's pretty clear that this administration cares deeply about reversing the rights, the wrongs of the past and making them right. The over $400 million settlement with the Navajo Nation is an example of our commitment to not fight, which has been done with many, many American Indian tribes and Alaska Native groups going back since we first had laws and treaties to break. And so, that settlement and about 100, close to 100 tribal trust litigation settlements have shown this administration's commitment to pushing the reset button on the government-to-government relationship that we have as a nation with tribes. So I appreciate your comments, and we have a lot of work to do to right the wrongs of the past. I deeply respect the importance of lands, not just to the people who are resident here today, but to the people who have had connections to these landscapes since time immemorial. So I will say that while all politics are local, that voices of people who care deeply about these public lands, which are owned by all Americans, are also important to take into account. And that's part of what I will be here to do, is to listen to that. I want to say that this county, the other counties that I've visited, our friends that have joined us here from those working on the Public Lands Initiative in Congress, have done tireless work to really deeply understand what's going on on these landscapes, what's here, what's important for native gathering, for sacred sites, for oil and gas development, for mining, for mineral development, for recreation, from rock climbing to mountain biking, for wilderness and habitat and animals, and for economic development and growth so that you can support a community for the long term and your children don't feel that they have to move away. I understand all of those things, and I applaud the really tremendous effort that's happened throughout this region, including other counties, in understanding these lands, putting together maps, and sharing those areas of common interest and identifying those areas of conflict. I would say that my colleagues at the BLM, and Robert can speak a bit to the Forest Service, have been very committed to a public lands management process that is collaborative. And that is how we're going to do things in the future. So whether it is master leasing plans in, you know, the Moab one in both San Juan and Grand County or farther along and others, that is very similar. In fact, aligns very closely, certainly in Grand County, with what people on the ground recommended in that master leasing plan process. And we know that's a wave of the future. Animals know no boundaries. Indian tribes knew none of these political boundaries. Minerals know no political boundaries. And yet, all politics are local, and we have to pay attention to political boundaries. So that is the challenge that we have, and that's one of the reasons why I'm in so many different places down in this whole region. It's why I'm pummeling my friends with questions about the PLI because it came out yesterday and I haven't had a chance to read it. But I do appreciate that they have been working with my team and revising language since a draft came out in January that did have some significant problems to it compared to what I think people were expecting. And I've heard that from a number of the counties, too. So we are working together as a thoughtful team to do what's right for the long term. But we also don't have very much time left in this administration, and there's a lot of high expectations for this process and certainly on our elected officials in Congress in making sure that this hard work that people have been engaged in actually amounts to action that people feel good about. So thank you very much for your comments, and particularly to the three of you for your service and for sharing your thoughts. So, all of it today, and Representative to you as well. Robert?
Hi, Dees Secretary. Let me also add my thanks to the three of you, Representative to you as well for your honesty and your candor. It's appreciated. I'm going to touch on just a couple of things briefly. One, like the secretary, I just want to underline our commitment to local collaboration. It's something we've tried to build into everything we do at the Forest Service. We don't do it perfectly yet, but it's vital to everything we do. As you know, management of Forest Service lands has been melt without controversy. And we do a better job when we collaborate with locals and bring folks in. We've tried very hard to do that and continuing, will continue that, and it's a commitment to all of you all as well. I also want to acknowledge the importance of water. That's critically important. You know, the National Forest System was founded to a significant degree around concerns around water. Right now, the Department of Agriculture know how important water is for agriculture, but also those communities. We talked to Forest Service folks this morning about the investments that communities have made into water. I just want to acknowledge how important that is for many of the communities here. Also, just want to touch on the importance of government-to-government consultation with the Native American tribes. That's something we've really worked hard with the Forest Service. Certainly, the Forest Service was doing a significant amount of work there before I came along and we came along as an administration. But I think the Forest Service, that's something that's critically important, will continue to be an important piece. I also want to also acknowledge the importance about the boots-on-the-ground question. And to your point about it doesn't have to be about enforcement, it can be about partnership. I think that's critically important. And I think we want to look for opportunities there where we can partner with communities to address some of the issues that we hear about importance of some of these archaeological sites, sacred sites and others. So that's an important one as well. Lastly, I just want to touch on the commitment to multiple use. We're a multiple-use agency, whether it's access, recreation, forest management, mining, grazing, all those things are part of what we do. And we try and balance that with everything we do. So that's an important consideration as well. I know it's important in this county and a lot of other places across the country. So again, I just want to appreciate the opportunity to be here. I want to appreciate the folks in the audience who cared enough to show up and really look forward to the next couple of days.[1654.76][1654.76](coughing)
Okay, well, this kind of wraps up the meeting. We're to the end of our allotted time. We wish you had more time. I know you're, I think you're planning on going camping sometime on this trip.
Not for the next few days. I'm going to prioritize the hotels.
I said I would really like to see Sally Jewell's camping equipment. You've got to have some nice camping equipment. Former CEO of REI.
I do okay. I got a garage sale.
Okay.
She camps, like my wife, in a hotel.
In this job. No, actually, I do camp.
I will just, very briefly, we formed a Public Lands Advisory Council. We met extensively. We said at the beginning as a commission, if we're going to participate in this, we're going to do it honestly and earnestly and with the voice of people. And I think we've done that. I think we've accomplished that. It means a lot to me what we had achieved. And there are so many times during that, during those meetings, some of those guys that were here can attest, we had to step back away from the table and just look and say, what an amazing county this is, you know, from the Elk Mountain down into Dark Canyon and Cedar Mesa, and Owl Canyon and Fish Canyon, and Grand Gulch, and Lake Powell, and up on the north end with Canyonlands. It is a special place. And I hope that whatever else comes through this, that that's not lost, that the people here have no lack of appreciation for where we live and what this is about. And I hope that that's respected from Washington DC. Often, we feel that decisions that are being made back there are being made by somebody who's looking at a Google map and saying, hey, this looks like, this would be good, and this would be good. It's very different when you get out here on the ground and you're appreciating.
It's not the way the decisions are made. Right, local folks?
The sagebrush decision that came out, somebody said, well, we did this on, we looked on Google Maps. But anyway, that's a different topic. So if there's nothing more from the commissioners here, we've got another meeting. I know the secretary has another meeting following this, and it's a closed meeting, so it's not open to the public. So we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.[1794.76][1794.76](applause)